All right, it is 7 o'clock. Let's start. This is the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting for April 7th. We have a pretty light agenda tonight as we continue to discuss next areas of focus following our revisions of the town zoning ordinance and its adoption by the Select Board. And it's really just the tiniest gang tonight, so I can dispense with any other introductions. Any changes to the agenda? Okay.
There's no one in the audience tonight?
We have no one in the audience. Just us chickens.
Patrick's here.
Patrick's here. Patrick Cody from Okemo Valley TV. Thank you, Patrick. So the last meeting we had was on March 6th. We did not have a quorum due to illness, so we're in a funny position of having notes or minutes from the March 6th meeting, but since we didn't have a quorum, it was not an official meeting. So that means two things. One, we have to approve the minutes of the prior meeting, which was February 12th. And there's actually a typo on that in these notes, so I'm going to ask Shenan to update the date to February 12th, which was our previous meeting. And I assume that we should approve these because the group happened and we talked about stuff, even though it wasn't an official quorum meeting. What do you think about that? Any thoughts?
I don't think it hurts to do it.
I don't think it hurts to do it, and that way they can at least be filed and there'll be a record of the conversation.
Right.
What do you think, Stacy?
I agree.
Okay. So I would like to move to approve the minutes of two meetings, February 12th, 2025, which we did not approve last month because of the lack of quorum, and also to approve the minutes or the notes from March 6th, 2025, at which we didn't have the quorum, but there was conversation about some of the issues in town.
So I move to approve the minutes from February 12th, 2025?
Okay.
I second.
Let's do them separately. So we've got the February 12th on the table, all in favor.
Aye.
Those are approved. On the March notes, I would like those to be voted on as well. Stacy, you weren't there, so you don't have to vote on them, but we're now a three-person board, so we actually don't need to all vote in favor.
I did watch the videos of the White Plains. I saw everything in hindsight.
Okay, great. So with the edit of changing January 6th to February 12th, can we have a motion to approve these?
Okay.
No more will be heard. One, two small questions. One, on the zoning administrator's report to provide due diligence that there are no outstanding permit issues, was that on those two, the White Plains Road and Town Hill Road, or was that on a further subject?
That was on those two properties.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, I think it's supposed to read, "There were two requests, White Plains Road and Town Hill Road, to provide due diligence that there are no outstanding permit issues."
I can see where that could be read differently, though. Yeah, good point.
Yeah, maybe just clarify that a little bit so it doesn't seem like there were no outstanding issues in general.
You could say there were two requests from White Plains Road and Town Hill Road to provide due diligence? Maybe that?
Yep.
What was your other question, Stacy?
Actually, I crossed it out, so that was it.
Okay. Okay, so with those changes, is there a motion in a second?
I motion to accept the notes from March 6th.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, these are approved. 12th, March 6th. Okay, let's move into reports. I'm going to just make one comment from the last Select Board meeting to remind this very small group that the Select Board voted officially to change the composition of this committee from five people to three people, at least until anyone shows any interest in joining us. And I believe voted Jane in until 2028 and me in until 2030, because it's a five-year term. So we are now staggered. Jane ends in 2028, Stacy ends in 2029, and I end in 2030. So that's where we stand for the moment. I think we should continue to make announcements, and when I put it in Reports Forum, I always try to ask if anyone's interested. I think it would be good if we had more people, at least an alternate, so keep your ear to the ground. If anyone expresses interest, let's have them make a statement of interest and answer some questions before this group and hopefully continue to recruit for other volunteers. Mail and email, there was no mail. Did you check email by any chance?
I did check email, and there's a permit request, which I'll talk about under zoning administration.
Okay. I haven't gotten any updates from the Regional Planning Commission. I have not gotten any updates from the Energy Board. Maybe we can invite Brian Callie to come for the next meeting, because it's been a couple of months on that. So maybe that can be the, where are we, April? Maybe that can be the May meeting. Zoning Administrator is not present tonight.
However, there is an application for a, from Renee Bol Rice on 231 Davis Farm Road, for a 30 by 40-foot storage and hobbies building.
Okay.
Do you want, Shenan, do you want the notes?
Thank you. 30 by 40.
And that was it.
Okay. And that's gone to the ZA, right?
Yeah.
Next is Zoning Board of Adjustment. Did you want to give an update on the question asked at the last meeting about the Hall Art Foundation?
Yes, a question was asked at the last meeting about the status of the berms. So I emailed Maurice Brandt, and this is, I'm going to read directly what she responded. "We continue to wait for V-Trans to finalize their bridge design so that we can move forward with the H&amp;H analysis, which we have been told should analyze conditions with the new bridge in place as the future permanent condition. I've kept in touch with Corey Burrell, the project manager for the bridge at V-Trans, who gave me the following update a couple of weeks ago about where they're at in the process." So Corey Burrell states, "We are currently wrapping up our preliminary plans that are under agency-wide review. We will then start the process of acquiring the necessary environmental permits and begin the ROW process," which I'm not sure what that means. "During the ROW process, we will meet with the affected property owners to discuss the project and its impact further, as well as any necessary permits or temporary rights or easements that will need to be obtained." Unquote. "V-Trans has agreed that their plans still may change, and so it makes sense to wait for them to finalize their plans and clear the design with environmental permits, et cetera, before we start, in case that will impact anything with their design, which would in turn make any H&amp;H analysis that we do ahead of time irrelevant. So we continue to wait while those plans are developed, confirmed. According to V-Trans project schedule, which they presented to the town this fall, the final plans are meant to be ready in the summer of 2025. So hopefully, we'll still be on track to move forward with the H&amp;H analysis this summer."
Great. Thank you.
Shenan, you want?
ROW tends to stand for right-of-way.
What?
Right-of-way.
What?
RROW.
Oh, thank you.
I Googled it.
Thank you.
Good to know.
ROW means right-of-way.
Tends to, I would assume in this case that would be.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. So it's good to get an update on that, and it sounds like we're all waiting for the state to complete their bridge design.
Right.
And a lot of other tactical information. We're going to, we have an actual agenda item on number five for the Bailey Smith Road update. Stacy, do you want to give us an update on archiving those PCZBA recordings from the pre-Okemo Valley TV days?
Yes, so we have a solid backup on a flash drive. I've talked to Melissa, and she is more than happy to host storage of that in the vault.
Great.
And then if we feel we need any more, I can ask her to, it's a lengthy process to put those on the disk, but if we feel we need more than that, I'd be happy to have to do that.
Okay.
I think originally we had talked about each of us having a copy. If we still want to do that, then all three of us, we can make three copies, then have the one in the vault. Or we can just be comfortable with the one in the vault. It's really, we're open. We have the flash drives.
Okay. I'm comfortable with it in the vault, particularly with the, yeah, I'm comfortable with it in the vault. Maybe Shenan, you can just make a note that a flash drive of prior meetings before Okemo Valley TV recordings has been made and given to the town clerk and is being kept in the vault for anyone who wants to see them. Do you know the meeting dates on that, Stacy?
What?
Do you know the meeting dates for what was covered on that flash drive?
The, from when?
That I don't.
From when to when?
I could look up.
Wouldn't you say it's from COVID when they started doing the Zoom?
Well, it's after, after COVID.
It was after?
Because I think the, I started attending the meetings on a regular basis in, was it late 2020?
Yeah.
And the chase hearing was June, June or July 2020?
The first one.
The first one?
Yeah.
So maybe we can just put from approximately 2020 to, Patrick, when did you guys start?
We started receiving recordings from Jean Goldsboro, Zoom recordings, and that would have been 2021. We started coming out 2022.
So maybe say-
I can't remember which month. I can look that up.
Wait, but we didn't go back to meeting in person.
Until '23?
Till '23.
So right when you came back to meeting in person? I can look that up and add that to the list.
That was like July of, yes, July 2023.
So maybe just say approximately 2021 to 2023, just so there's a concept of a date range, and if we can dial in on that later. But at least there'll be some record in writing that if anyone's looking for a recording, they might know where to go.
Oh, hold on. I'm looking at it right now. So, May 8th, 2022, I think we officially moved over from Zoom to-
No.
No?
We didn't move over to Zoom until we started meeting in person.
No.
And we didn't start meeting in person.
Okay.
Oh, wait, we switched from Zoom to Okemo Valley TV.
I think in around, right around May.
No, in '23. You didn't do it-
Oh, in '23?
Right, because in '22, we were still doing Zoom, because I was the secretary.
Hold on one second. I'm listening to my assistant who did all this.
Okay.
What's the date?
January 11, 2003.
2023. So January of 2023.
Is what? Is the Zoom?
The last of the Zoom when we moved over to Okemo.
In January?
Right.
But we didn't meet in person until July.
Your earliest city is January, if I'm not mistaken.
But okay, then we don't need to talk about this too much more, since they're all there.
Yeah, okay.
So we're just, I'm just looking for like a little pointer in our notes, so that if someone were looking for it.
So just approximately from May of 2021 to January of 2023, would that be some of the surest?
I think that works.
Yeah.
And I can dig into this a little further and send everyone an email.
Okay. I don't think it's critical, just so that someone would know where to look if they thought they needed to.
Okay, sorry.
All right. Next item, number four. So we are, we're in a funny vacuum position right now of not having an active grant project on our plate for the first time in a long time. We have been kind of casting around for ideas on where to focus. I'm not particularly interested in making up busy work for us, but where there are areas that really should be focused on, I'm happy to do that. We had talked about looking at sections of the town plan. There's the energy section, but I think Mark is not ready for that yet, so they've asked us to hold off on that. There were a couple of other parts of the town plan, but really, the town plan does not need to be updated for years yet, so I don't know if that is an urgent use of our time. There are three areas that have kind of risen to the top lately that might bear looking at. One is sort of how we think about and manage Class 4 roads. I know that when the zoning administrator was here, I had talked to him about that just as an aside, and he said, "If you want to start looking at it and make any kind of recommendation for how we could manage them better, you know, Select Board is all ears." I don't know if that's something that we're interested in doing. I know the Select Board is thinking of, or has voted to create a wastewater committee. I don't know if we want to be involved in that at all, or if that is already covered, but that's another idea. We had had a request some months ago from a resident to address the issue of car storage in yards and perhaps maybe not having them be front and center. I don't know if that is something we would be interested in looking at. And I don't know if there are other things that are coming to the top. We talked about flooding, but that's an area that frankly, the state is going to be making a lot of changes in according to Madison County Regional Commission, and it doesn't make sense, I don't think, for us to do anything when they might change the whole framework in a year or two or three. So I think the flood zone issues are better weighted on until the state weighs in there. Your thoughts? And if we do do that, how would we commence?
My thoughts is that I have heard dismay from certain residents about our Class 4 roads.
What do you mean by dismay?
That they're in terrible shape, and the horseback riders are suffering because of it. So there's that. And then the wastewater thing, I think, is kind of important. So those two things I would focus on.
So I'm all about talking for anything, but I'm not about duplicating effort. So if we can speak about these topics without, you know, duplicating what other people are working on, and then just give our feedback into the committees or the meetings that we're having on these, that'd be great. So the energy, we've been told, put on, well, right?
I think so, yeah. I think there's a grant that they are looking into applying for, but it hasn't, nothing has happened yet, so they've asked us to wait.
And then the climate change and flooding, they sort of say, situation, the state's working on that wastewater in the left, like we're meeting, Lisa, for most having to be five member, five member to me, which I think needs to materialize a little bit before we get involved.
I think she has two people, and I think there's a third person that might be interested. So that's where she stands now. I think that's like really important, that committee, and it could be more than five people even. I don't know. You know, so.
But if they have five people, three people, whatever it is, and that we are showing up and participating in those meetings, I think that would be very important.
Right, right.
With our understanding of our overall plan?
Yes.
And then the Class 4 roads, I took from the last meeting that I watched on recording, I took, I had to take away that Bob and the Select Board were completely and totally responsible for the Class 4 roads, and they would make all the decisions surrounding that.
I think that's true. When I spoke to Bob about that walking out the door, he said, because I said, you know, "Do, would, do you want any help looking into that?" And he said, "If you want to poke around and make suggestions, poke away." So I, I mean, we can ask him if, more formally, if they are interested in kind of having us dig into that a little bit. There is a Class 4 road ordinance in Redding. It's pretty thin and doesn't cover a lot, and I'm not sure that it is maybe adequately addressing people's concerns. I think the Class 4 roads had a lot of damage after Hurricane Irene that kind of fundamentally changed them, and their usage is also different now and is much increased in recent years from sort of more commercial touring use. And it is changing the nature of the Class 4 roads. I know the one near me now, you used to be able to ride horseback on. Now it's just down to the ledge, and you couldn't ride a horse on it. I can't ride my bike up it anymore. So I have heard similar concerns around other parts of Redding. Maybe that's something that we can clarify with the Select Board if they want us to more formally work on trying to see best practices on Class 4 road management and make a proposal for the Select Board. I don't really want to waste time if they're not going to entertain an update to that, but if they're willing to do that, I think that that is an issue that is timely.
Well, I did suggest to people who mentioned things to me that they write a letter to the Select Board and come to the Select Board meeting and bring it up as a topic.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
I agree. And then just before reference, we don't have these Black Forests on our properties. My grandfather was wise enough to get all those thrown up. So, but the one road that we do allow, the 100 in Great Mount Horse Association to, we give them to permission to ride on this hard break trail. And over the years, the decades, I have seen that road go from a great trail to a terrible trail, you know, mostly to do with, like, maybe climate change, erosion from these storms. I've had the excavator up there doing work from time to time over the decades and putting it back together so it's more passable, and then the next thing you know, we have another storm to wash us all back downhill. So it's a, you know, I think with all the flooding and the change of the climate change issues, this is just going to be an ever-evolving story, our Class 4 roads, and, you know, it's going to be used for horses biking. And then the topic is, how do you maintain them cost-effectively? Who maintains them in case for, and then the use of them, does it alarm the trail, or is it just part of the natural processes?
Yeah, they're all good, all good questions. For sure, I think the increased volume of water that we're getting in our storms now is not conducive to nice, grassy, dirt-covered trails. So that's, that's good feedback on your private trail, because that, you have the usage under control there, and it's still happening. I don't, my understanding is that the town does not maintain the Class 4s at all for payment.
And I think the only place the date jumps into the picture is that they have a piece of property, state-owned, where they need access to and from, then they'll manage or retain it.
Well, Jane, I think you're right. I think if people want that to be taken up, they should, they should write to the Select Board and request that, and then maybe the Select Board will task us with helping them, making a proposal.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So I'm not sure that gets us any closer to next month, we're going to sit down and work on X. But maybe this is just the natural progression after the big project and having a little bit of gap in the schedule right now. Car storage in yards, I do feel like we just need to address that and decide whether or not that's something that we should be thinking more about if that-
I think I'll refer back to that point, and I'm forediscussing it completely, and I've actually made some complaints over the years about various places that have junk in their front yards.
Yeah, I think it's junk. It's not just cars. I misread.
Yeah. And it's always fallen upon, you know, their property they can do with and as they wish. So now I backforward that to our conversation about the screening that we had put in the, the update on the bylaws, and there was resistance against us putting any source of situation for screening operations of any store from public sites. And we retracted that and took it off, of course, which-
No, actually, it's still in there.
We didn't take it off.
The screening's still in there?
It is in there because-
Oh, that's great, because we have to go back and, the Select Board asked us to go back and look at that and decide if it's correct.
I don't think it's on our plate. I think it's in their plate, because I think the way they left it, they got advice from Mark that they could not make that change without re-warning their hearing.
You are correct.
And I think it's with them. I don't, I actually don't think it's sitting with the Planning Commission anymore, because we made our recommendation, and they chose not to change that in real time. So currently, the way the zoning ordinance is, it requires screening. But that's for, that's for a home-based business. If that's just like stuff in your yard, I don't think that's the same issue. So if you-
So do we want to ask the question of the Select Board, do they want us to tackle it, or do we just want to put it on the agenda and tackle it and then give them our recommendation?
I think we should ask.
I think we should ask too, before we put work in.
I'm happy to write, write an email to the Select Board saying this issue was brought to our attention. I'll go back and try to find the email asking us to take a look at it. There's certainly examples of other towns that have kind of stuff-in-the-yard ordinances. Ludlow seems to have an ordinance for most things. We could look at neighboring towns and see what other towns are doing. But why don't I send a note to the Select Board? I'll copy this board and see what their interest is.
And I'm going to save yourself a little- And I'm going to save yourself a little bit here. I didn't mean junk. I, I said junk. The people's junk is other, you know, is their treasure.
Another person's treasure.
Sorry, I said, it will not last.
Yeah, I, I understood. Um, okay, I will send that email, and you'll both see it, and we'll see where it goes. All right. Anything else to say about any of that item? Nope, nope, okay. Um, next thing on the agenda, Jane, as the ZBA chair, if you could give us an update on the 419 Bailey's Mills Road, uh, camping situation?
Okay, it was, the situation was, this is the Overland Pilgrimage, uh, that is Derek Chase's business, and, um, he did have, uh, it advertised on his website that there would be camping on May 23rd, 24th, something like that. So it was brought to the select board. It was brought to the planning commission, and, um, he was told by Robert Allen that, that he needed to file a permit, and he did not file a permit. And as of now, the, uh, thing is off, the, it's not being advertised anymore. It's being advertised that it will take place someplace else, so it's not an issue anymore. It's over.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Is that all of the events?
He only had?
Just that, or just that one?
That's the only one he had scheduled here. His other events are elsewhere. So, yeah, I think they may be doing some touring here, but no camping.
Because it falls outside of the zoning ordinance. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is to plan for our next meeting, which is on my calendar, Monday, May 5th. Does that work for everybody? That's our, that's supposed to be the regularly, Cinco de Mayo. That's the regularly scheduled first Monday of the month, if that works for both of you.
Can we bring margaritas?
But only if you bring margaritas.
Okay.
Yes, you want tomorrow?
Okay.
Salt and margaritas.
Sounds good. Um, so that's a go for everyone?
No.
Calendar problems? Okay. Other business tonight? Anything outstanding that we haven't covered? Okey-dokey. Any public comments from our two guests, Mr. Vanderboom, Ms. Walton? You're upside down, Richard.
Hey, why is it sunny there? It's not sunny here.
You are not in Vermont, my friend.
I've never seen pop trees in Reading.
It's in a pot in a greenhouse.
We'll be earthy enough.
All right, I, I'm going to take that as no public comments.
I do have one thing. I just wanted to make an announcement that this Saturday, on the 12th, is the first Futures Reading meeting of 2025, where we will discuss, um, our vision for Reading in the coming years, 10 years, our future vision.
Our collective vision, yes.
Our collective vision, yes. We would like everyone's input on this. Um, the RCT Reading Community Trust, which has won the grant, will be giving an update on their progress. And, um, we will be talking about the past Fall Festival and start to plan for the next Fall Festival. So everyone, please come.
What time is that?
It's at the library on the 12th from 9:00 to 11:00. We'll be having coffee and whatever, and a little snack, and a lot of fun.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, I think, and that concludes our very efficient, slim meeting tonight. If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
I accept that.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.